Spotsylvania County School Board Meeting to order. We have all the members present, so we have a quorum. Mr. Laura, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Laura. I'd like to just remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. And I'd like to thank Deputy DeBella for being here this evening. I need a motion, please, to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Blalock, and I'll say the second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero, approved. Thank you. We have no public hearing. Moving on to item 3.01, the German-American Partnership Program. Ms. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. The German-American Partnership Program, GAP, is a home stay exchange program sponsored by both the German and American governments. Established in 1972, there are now over 7,000 students in both countries taking part in this program. The Riverbend/Cortland GAP program began in 2013 and has included 60 students and families thus far. This evening, we would like to invite Ms. Patina Honinger from Cortland High and Ms. Kelly Mattis from Riverbend High to share with you some of the highlights of this program. Ladies?
Thank you, Ms. Flannard. And we would like to start with...
Oh, I'm Kelly Mattis. I'm the German teacher at Riverbend. And we have a PowerPoint, of course, to show to you tonight. But I'd like to tell you that this program, this will be our fifth year, actually, of existence, the third year in this county, and it's served 200 students so far. And we have some of them with us tonight.
And we also want to ask the families that have hosted our students to stand up. So would you please stand up? And thank you.
Very well. (applause) You ready? All right. How do we just... And I might make comments during it because I can't help myself.
Go ahead.
But how do I... How's it... Ah. Is it showing? Ah. This is Nick. He's a former German student. He was hired by Adidas in Germany, and he has a degree from UVA. This is also one of my former German students. He was hired by Adidas also in Germany, accounting, Virginia Tech. He had internships every summer. This is Alex. Alex has, will have a degree in German, Spanish, and international relations, and she was our first year of our GAP program. This is Connor. He was the first year of the GAP program here and knew no German and is now majoring in international relations in German. And this is Sean. He is in Germany now, and he will sign up for... He has already enrolled in his computer science classes in Germany for the spring. As you can see, you get lots of opportunities. You can study at a German university for free if you know what's going on, and the GAP program will give you that. Companies look for German, for German speakers. The US military pays a stipend for people who have the right level of proficiency, and you get friends and contacts. $138,000 more during your working lifetime if you know German. How can we get our students to achieve this? Exchange programs like ours, earlier language study, and a different perspective on how we look at this. The GAP program was started in 1972 out of the Goody Institute in Boston, and it expanded in the eighties with the United States Department...
Can you speak into the microphone so our TV viewers can hear you?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
The State Department, and then our program is matched up with a program in Bavaria at a school there. Here's us hosting the Germans in the spring every year. We go to DC. We go, we went to Williamsburg this year. We take the Germans there and give them lots of different cultural opportunities. We have birthday parties for the kids who are here and farewell parties. They come to school for two weeks. It's a requirement that we all go at least 10 days to school on either side. We talk about the differences and the similarities between our programs. And they help us, they present, do a lot of presentations. We go, and we get more airport welcomes. And we also get lots of welcome dinners, which is always lovely. Food is always a good thing for exchange programs. We were there for July 4th this year. And we go to classes. We do presentations. We do panel discussions. We do small group discussions with 11th graders, 9th graders, 6th graders. They're coming up. They're always interesting. They have 5th through 12th grade there. And this is what we found when we've done this. We find that their 6th graders speak better in their second year of English than our students do in their second year of German. We find that their 11th graders can do better after six years of English than ours can do. Their 10th graders have had two exchanges by the time ours will even think about doing an exchange, and we need to start foreign languages earlier than we do now. We have found this out because of our program. Why do we need this? There's a lot of reasons. We need this because, for the biliteracy seal that the state has just put out there for us to do, which is wonderful, we need it so we can give our students more career and job opportunities, because with a foreign language, and especially German, you've got more. We need them so that we can be more competitive. And we need them so that they can take a look at the world and see it's a big place, and they can fit in it. We need to treat the acquisition of world languages as a mandatory skill, same way it is core classes. And we appreciate the fact that you continue to support us by allowing us to have this program here. Now, we didn't just do this type of thing. Here's some of the amazing places we've gone from the GAP program. And palaces. We've gone to palaces. We've gone to medieval cities. And we've gone to museums, memorials, and beautiful train stations. The kids will recognize some of these. We've gone to silver mines. We've gone to mountain meadows with llamas and rocky sea coasts. And, of course, we've gone on charity runs also with the school itself. There and back again is where we always go, but we're never the same as when we started. And our students will tell you they're not. We did bring all of them back this year.
No, we did not.
Well, except for one.
We did not.
We did not. We left one who is the one studying there this year. Next year, we will have two who are graduating from Riverbend who will be going to study in Germany. And they're here with us tonight. Stand up, you two. Anyhow. We do appreciate the fact that you are supporting us in this and that you allow us to use space and give us permission to do this with the kids, because exchange programs are at the heart of being able to expand what our kids' opportunities are. And I am extremely passionate about this program, but I won't bend your ear for as long as I could. But if you ever want to know anything about it, please, please come see me, because I would love to bend your ear for a couple hours about this. Thank you.
So there's one more, one more information. We have a similar program in Spotsylvania High School. He's trying to build it up, so we are hopeful that there will be a second one pretty soon.
Yeah, German is a wonderful language. My son actually took Riverbend, took it at Riverbend for three years, so it's a great language. So thank you all for being, thank you for being here and your wonderful presentation and informing us and giving us all this wonderful information, and you guys are awesome. Thanks. Okay, moving on to item 4.01, Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade Participant Recognition. Ms. Flannard.
Thank you again. For the second year in a row, we are pleased to share that Cortland High School senior, Cassie Cosse, was selected to participate in the 2015 Macy's Great American Marching Band, and this band will march in the 88th Macy's Thanksgiving Parade in New York City. The band is made up of 185 high school musicians in the country. Cassie represents not only Spotsylvania, but the entire state of Virginia. She will be leaving to go to New York on November 21st, and she will be there for six days for rehearsals and leadership workshops, visits to some of the most famous attractions, of course, the parade, as well as a Thanksgiving Dinner Dance. Cassie will be marching and playing her euphonium in the parade, which will air on NBC Thanksgiving morning at 9:00 AM. And this evening, we are here to congratulate Cassie on her accomplishment. We look forward to seeing you at the Macy's Day Parade, and I just learned that you have a possibility of even being nominated to be on the Today Show for that Monday morning. So we will cross our fingers for you for the Today Show. And Cassie, if you could please come forward. They are family present for Cassie, if you could please stand as well?
Ms. Flannard, if you could continue with 4.02, German-American Stuben Parade Recognition, please.
Thank you, yes, sir. The German-American Stuben Parade is held annually on the third Saturday in September. It was founded in 1957 by German immigrants and German-Americans, one of the largest ancestral groups living in the United States, who wanted to keep the traditions of their homeland alive. In September 2015, 24 students and alumni from Cortland High School performed in the event on Fifth Avenue in New York City. We also do have a banner that was created by our students that we are presenting this evening, if you'd like to bring that forward for everyone to see. And we do also have the students with us, and when I call your name, if you could please come forward. We have leading the group, Ms. Patina Honinger. I'm not sure if he arrived. Is Sam Cosse...
No. Those are the Riverbend, those are mine.
Okay, so, oh, gotcha. And then Davis is not here either.
No, no, they're here, they're for me now.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Understood now. We'll just do yours first, then, okay? Great. We have Aleah Sutsman. Bryden Jackson II. And then we also allow... You want to do them separate then?
Yes, let me do it for sure.
And Emma Booth. I apologize, Emma Booth. (applause)
Get everybody on the side. We'll get the banner maybe held lower in front of everybody so we can see that.
Maybe.
Put it in the back. Gotcha. (inaudible). Yes. There you go. They're tall. (laughing) One, two, three. One more, just to make sure. One, two, three. Pictures behind me.
Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to item 5.01, Public Comments. Dr. Martin, if you could please give the instructions.
Good evening. The Public Comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request addition or time for the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Courtney Howell.
Hi, my name is Courtney Howell. I live at 3812 Brick and Lane. I'm in the Lee Hill District. I am here today coming as a concerned parent. I made several phone calls to Ms. Blalock on Monday, October 19th, from hours of four at six, and then again at, between the hours of eight and nine, when she had actually told my mother to have me call her at 8:00, and then told me to call her regarding my concern the following morning. When I could not reach her on Monday night, I sent her a text to let her know that I was trying to reach her in regards to the concern, my concern, and then followed up Tuesday morning with an email. Still no response. I also contacted you, Ms. Shelley, as well, and left a voicemail that I had in, a concern that Mrs. Blalock was not returning my phone calls, and I had not heard anything. I think that this is in poor taste for Ms. Blalock to ask me, as a concerned parent, to call her, and then I never received a reply back. I mean, after all, this is not what, as a board member, you guys are elected to do. You guys are supposed to respond back to your families. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker, Vicki Beach.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Beach. I live in Alitt, Virginia, so I'm not in the district. However, my granddaughter is in the Lee Hill District. And I wanted to just come to talk to the board. I did call Ms. Blalock that night, and I had explained the incident and our concern about what had happened at the school with my granddaughter in elementary school. And she also, at that time, seemed very concerned and said she wanted to talk to my daughter, but then it appeared that she used the caller ID not to. It really is disheartening when you're an elected official and you should be calling your constituents back. They elected you, you work for the people, and you represent the people. So, you know, I'm really disheartened that, you know, you would take it, even if you had talked with Dr. Baker and he felt that you shouldn't talk to us, you all still are responsible to hear your constituents out, and because you're elected, and they are who have put you in the office, and it's just a reminder. The other issue that I have is, today on the agenda, I noticed that you all have your discipline report. And on the discipline report, I saw, on the main report, there were three incidences in the sexual assault and sexual harassment area. When I go back and you look, there were two in middle school and one is in, in high school. When you go to the elementary school level, there are none. And I don't quite understand why an incident that I know occurred has not shown up on these reports. I hope that the gentleman or whoever, Mr. or Mrs. Wolf, I'm not certain who they are, will address it when they talk, how this report is made up, because I'd like to better understand why information, when you all request it, isn't in that report. If it's going to be at a later date because the case hasn't quite been closed yet, then I'd like to know, assured, when the case is closed, that it should be showing up in that month's report.
Madam Chair, that's all of the speakers that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Are there any other people in the audience that would care to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close item 5.01 and open 5.02, Board Member Comments. This evening, I'll... There will be some comments later that we are passing to Dr. Baker, so, but I'm going to have Mrs. Blalock. I'm going to have you start this evening, please.
Thank you. I want to first address the two speakers. I agree with you on one thing. We are elected officials, officials, and we should be responsive, which I get called a lot of things, but usually non-responsive is not it. The situation that you were dealing with when we spoke on the phone that evening, I was actually at a football game, and I made a call that night, I was that concerned, because your allegation is severe. It's a very severe, and I don't know the details. The reason I can't get involved is once I had called staff to make sure that this was being addressed, investigation was open. It could fall under school, it could fall under criminal, it could fall under anything. At that point, if I don't step out, I can no longer serve you later. I would have to recuse myself from everything in the future. To keep myself from being recused in the future, which it would probably, it's very probable it will get to the school board level, I would not be able to help at all. I completely agree with you and apologize you felt slighted and that I wasn't calling you back, but it certainly had nothing to do with that. My concern is your granddaughter, your daughter, the other children involved. This happens to be at my school, and I absolutely took it extremely seriously. Made a phone call that night. I can't engage on that level at that time if I'm going to help you at all down the road if these allegations turn out to be factual. At this point, I have no knowledge of the investigation, which is where I was trying to be and where I need to be. So with all due respect, I did this out of protection for later on, in case it does come to the school board. And again, that is a probable thing to happen. It happens quite a bit. If you want to chat about that when it's over, I'll be here tonight, if you want to wait till the meeting's over. As Ms. Shelley said, our superintendent will be making remarks regarding the situations at Riverbend today, so, other than that, I want to thank the community for support, always supporting the public school systems, and I will pass it on to you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Blalock. Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple announcements and a few comments. First comment or announcement I'd like to make is on the 11th of November, here at School Board, we are going to have a banquet to celebrate the winners of the Friendly School Challenge in our 10th Annual Race Against Teen Violence. I've extended to all the board members and staff an invitation to come, if you're so willing, to celebrate the schools that had an opportunity to encourage and inspire their young people to come out and run against violence in our community and to obtain a greater awareness of what they can do in order to identify and also prevent bullying and other forms of violence. That's going to be at 6:00 on the 11th of November, and we're excited, once again, that we partner with Centerra, that they would offer $1,000 for each one of the top winners in the high school, middle school, and elementary school divisions, with $500 second prizes and $250 third prizes. So we're really thrilled about that. Some of the schools do tremendously great things with those added resources. I know for a fact that Cortland High School purchased new state-of-the-art helmets for their players with their proceeds. Spotsylvania Middle School has used it for a rock climbing wall and also a scoreboard. So there's a variety of different things that schools use that money for, it's their discretion, and we're delighted that we can partner with Centerra to offer that, as well as bring up awareness of a very important issue that's in our community today. I also like to bring everyone's attention to the fact that we're right around the corner for budget season once again, and there's a lot of things that we need to consider in next year's budget, and we are looking forward to receiving input from stakeholders and from the community on how we should best prepare our budget to meet the needs of our students. So I, for one, am looking for your input, and I'll continue to advocate for things that matter to students and parents in terms of making school not only enjoyable but affordable. With that being said, I'll turn over my remarks to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell.
One of the most important dates in the year for Virginia. Our system in democracy depends on people voting. And a week from tomorrow is an election, and I would like to, A, encourage everyone to go out and vote. But I'm concerned, as I consider this, and as I've, and I'm sure other candidates that are both in the audience and on the podium this evening, recognize, when we go out looking for voters to talk to them about a campaign, it's very discouraging to walk down a street, stop at one house, and then look at a piece of paper and see that the next house in which there are voters is five houses down the street. And that's commonly repeated every single block in our county, and I can guarantee that. And we teach civics in our high schools, and it's discouraging to me to see that somehow we can't get our students to retain the ability to be a functioning citizen in our society. And I don't know where we go on that, but I'm, I find that a very discouraging experience, and I like to frankly just encourage everybody in the listening and viewing audience, as well as in our meeting here, to get out and vote a week from tomorrow. We have very many important local races. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Be brief this evening. Wunderbar for the German program. Wunderbar for the German program, the exchange program. I did have to study German, but I was required to, not because I wanted to. And it was like three years. And it was interesting because if I'd go home and talk to my dad or my grandfather and I would say something in German, they didn't know what I was saying because I was studying classical German and they knew what they call low German. But it is, it does offer fantastic opportunities by all means. And I also want to say, you know, that with the election coming up, please exercise your civic responsibility and please vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember growing up as a kid, when I was growing up as a kid, we used to joke around in my neighborhood, what do you call the person who speaks many languages? And of course, the answer is multilingual. What about two languages? Bilingual. What about one language? American.
That's so true.
And I grew up in a household where we spoke four or five different languages all at the same time, and I thought that every household in America was that way. Come to find out, it isn't that way. In fact, in most households, only one language is spoken. Regarding the Election Day that's coming up, the other day I took advantage of the fact that I'm planning on being out of town on Election Day, so I went and voted early. But I can't vote often like I did in Massachusetts, but at least I voted the one day. But I had a unique experience that I'd like to share with all of you when I went to vote. When I got out of my car, I heard all these kids having fun and laughing and carrying on. There was a group of kids from Lee Hill Elementary School, they were out there running in the back of, in the playground behind Ari Lee. And you have no idea, it gave me goosebumps. There's nothing that I enjoy more than to see children having fun, and I'm sure that all that energy translates into good grades in math, science, and languages. Because I encourage all of your principals that by all means, I know that you've got SOLs and tests and what have you, but every minute that you have your kids out there exercising and having fun will translate into a better attitude and better grades. So I like to commend Ari Lee School for your PE program, and I like to think that the same thing goes on in all our schools, but I witnessed the other day Ari Lee. So I commend him, Mr. Lamb. Thank you for your job. Well done. Another lady that I like to recognize, Mrs. White, Ruth White, stand up, Ms. White, so we can all look at you. She, this wonderful lady is the Assistant Principal of Cortland High School, and the other day she invited me to attend a program that she has done at Cortland High School for many years that encouraged families to come in and talk about academic success. And it involved dinner, and then we go into the auditorium, and the coaches and counselors, and she's there, and we just have a great time, which I'm sure, again, translates into a positive attitude, which is why the old saying, "Today is a good day to be a cougar", it's so much true. You have a special community out there at Cortland, and Mrs. White, you're making a difference out there. And lastly, Madam Chair, as I have done for a number of years, I always like to recognize what I consider to be the finest people in America, those people that call themselves Assistant Principal and Principal. So if you fall into those categories, please stand to be recognized, and may God continue to bless all of you for the work that you do. You represent the best that America has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Ms. Grant.
Echoing what Mr. Braswell had to say earlier, it is the start of budget season, and being on the Audit and Finance Committee, we are eagerly working on that and preparing the budget for our work sessions. And again, as Mr. Braswell said, if you find that there is something that you would like us to include, it is your responsibility to get in touch with us so we can represent you and make your voice heard. But on that note, Dr. Baker has some important updates for us, so I don't want to take any more time.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I did want to mention as well, Ms. Blalock explained very, very well about making the communication. What she said goes as well for me. We would not be able to go further with what it was that you were discussing. So thank you very much for being here, and apologies for, we'll talk to you later. Thank you. And Halloween is this coming weekend, so any of your kids, any of our students or children that are going to be out trick-or-treating, have fun, be safe, make sure that the masks, you can see through the masks, and all of that for our students. So with that, I'm going to yield my comments and turn the microphone over to Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I wanted to first remind the board of an event that is going to be taking place tomorrow evening at Cortland High School, the Discover Your Future event that is going to highlight so many of the different programs and learning opportunities that we have and services that we have across the whole school division. And it's a great opportunity for parents and for students to be able to look ahead and see what is going to be there down the road for them as they begin to consider their future. So all parents are welcome, particularly those from the elementary and middle level, to see those highlights tomorrow evening at Cortland High School. Since we had our last board meeting, I know that the School Board is well aware of the many reportings that have come out and the communications regarding the threat to the Riverbend High School community. I want to again extend my sincere appreciation and gratitude to the Sheriff's Department and the local law enforcement for their proactive, thorough, and timely investigation of this threat. In addition, I am so very proud of our school administration, the students that came forward originally to help root out the concern and the threat, and their responsiveness in cooperating with and assisting law enforcement helped to ensure well ahead of any imminent threat the safety in students and staff. And for that, I remain proud and grateful. I had shared recently that I remain very sensitive from both the perspective of the Division Superintendent and also being a parent of a student in the school division, that the details of the investigation that continue to come out in various media affiliates, many of those details we have no control over, but what we do have control over is to continue to try and communicate as best we are able to and to also create the climate conditions that enable our students and our community to move forward and to feel safe and secure. Knowing that the first day back following that news was today, I and many members of my staff had the opportunity to be at Riverbend for the majority of the school day. And what I was able to see there is a school that operated smoothly and calmly for the majority of the day. There were some rumors that began to fester that came out on social media and I know created great alarm for many of our community members and parents, many of which called or stopped by, and in most cases once reassured that those rumors were not true, were appreciative and have continued, and I applaud our community because from the perspective of a parent, even though we are all very appreciative of the position that we are in now, as opposed to the nature of the potential that was reported, I do believe that as we process as a school community, there still needs to be the time for folks to understand and to feel reassured. And so a communication was sent out, I'm aware, from Dr. Wright and the Riverbend community this evening, again, to not only try to dispel various rumors that circulated today, but also to again reassure that we have additional safety measures in place, particularly for the sense of feeling safe by having additional presence, not because there is a threat currently, but because it helps to have additional presence, whether it's law enforcement or division personnel, and that will remain in place as we move forward this week. I also wanted to share that the school will be open this week. That's the best way to put it, for not only our students, but for our community. If our parents need to come in physically into the school and engage in dialogue to either raise questions or to discuss concerns with school staff, with division personnel, and we will have various law enforcement officials there as well to help have those conversations that will help. So it's more of an extended forum throughout the week that will be available, and that has also been communicated in the latest autodiler as well as the email that was sent out this evening. But while this is a stressful time and that intensity and heightened feeling is something we want to see dissipate so that students and staff can focus on learning, we also understand that that can take some time. And so we will be vigilant and we will be present to try to help our students, staff, and community into moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Okay, moving on to Board Committee Reports, item 6.01. Any reports? Dr. Meyer.
Madam Chair, just to communicate to the fellow board members that this afternoon had the first Calendar Committee meeting looking at 2016, 2017, and that we'll be having further meetings and bringing to the board when we have our conclusion of our deliberations for our recommendation to Dr. Baker and then come forward to the board.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Meyer.
Can I have a follow-up to Dr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Meyer, is there a timeline that was discussed that I do get asked about the calendar quite a bit? Did you discuss?
We did. Matter of fact, it's supposed to be completed by the end of this month, but I don't think that's going to occur because we did get a little later start than we had anticipated, but the committee is working very fast, and we did make some initial decisions concurrent with what we have had. So, and it's just looking at the details within the calendar, that there were questions both from elementary, middle, and high, to make sure that we do address concerns that were brought up by the teachers in how we communicate with the calendar. So we did make some very substantial decisions today, yes, the committee did.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. We did have a food task force meeting this past week, and the, one of the items from that committee is actually one of our action items this evening, so we will see that here in a little while. Any other board member or any committee reports? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the Consent Agenda, items 7.01, 7.02. Dr. Martin, would you please inform us of the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda this evening, the minutes of October 12th, 2015 Regular Meeting of the School Board and donations which are usual and customary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please?
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, passes 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to Action Item 8.01, Approval of Revisions to Regulation EFB-R3 Student Meals. Ms. Gaines.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Based on our current practice, any funds remaining on a student's meal account after one year is automatically processed in the form of a refund, regardless of the amount. In an effort to maximize limited resources for both the school division and the County Treasurer's Office, also based on feedback from parents, staff is recommending the following revision. Any balance under $10 that remains on a student meal account on which there is no transaction activity for one year or more would not be refunded. Parents and legal guardians who choose to leave such funds in the student meal account for one year or more, by this policy notification from the schools have agreed that such funds can be donated to the school division's Food Service General Fund where such funds will be placed. If you look in the green folder that's before you, I have provided you with a listing of 3,127 checks that were processed last year that totaled $2,974.59. When you take all of these checks and the dollar amount and divide them, the average check amount was 93 cents. Please note that every effort will be made to notify parents of the positive amounts on their account, letters in backpacks, publicizing on the meal account website, the division website, auto dial, parent email communication, graduate packets, and transfer exit packets, letters coming from the school buck system. The proposed language has been reviewed by Legal, the County Treasurer's Office, the Food Service Task Force, and the Audit and Finance Committee. At this time, staff is recommending approval of the revisions to Regulation EBR Student Meals.
May I have a motion to approve EFEBR3?
I will second it.
Motion by Ms. Grant, a second by Mr. Blaine. Are there any comments? Ms. Blalock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. As you know, Ms. Gaines, the Food Task Force was started with me and Ms. Whelan years ago, and I've sat on it ever since, and it's an important committee to me. The reason we give those refunds is because if you remember, a few years ago, it was when we were covered by another company, not who we currently use as our food service provider. It was found out that there was leftover funds from a transfer or a senior or whatnot, and it was being kept at the time and not refunded. I brought it to the task force and said, "We need to be giving this money back." And we started giving it back. So therefore, I can't support keeping any money, anybody else's money. That's not our money. I don't care if it is under $10. I think we should keep it whatever legitimate time you can. I mean, there's unclaimed funds a lot. I agree with the communication, and maybe there is a statute of limitations that would run it out, and I understand that, but I think we need to give them all the time they need. I know that a few years ago, we were having things up to $30 that were not refunded to families, and I don't think it's because they didn't want it, it's just it had slipped their mind, their child had graduated, and probably the last thing on their mind was their lunch account, including I got a refund for about that much a few years ago. And so I can't support it for that reason. It is not our money. It belongs to whoever put it in that account. I would hope that we would first try to put it to a sibling, which is very common that we have a lot of siblings, if we could transfer that money to the siblings' account so the family still benefits from it. And if we would let it run, is there a statute of limitations, we could hold this money?
In talking with Legal, she's indicated if we put a limit of one year, that would be sufficient. But what we can't-
But that's not a state law, and that would be us locally imposing. And if we want to set something in place that gives us, I think it needs to be more than one year, I'm sorry. But I think there needs to be more work on this. Maybe we do put up, maybe if it's five years, okay, I can understand. But I think we need to start with siblings and have some other recourse first, but I can't support keeping money that doesn't belong to the school system, it belongs to the person who put it in the account.
And then based on current practice, if we do find that we have positive account balances, the first thing we do do is to put those funds onto a siblings' account. That's number one. We do do that.
Okay, good.
And when you look at unclaimed property, in order for this not to be unclaimed property, the statutory is one year.
Is it one?
It's one year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Ms. Gaines, I kind of share Ms. Blalock's sentiment. I do believe that if it's their money, it's their money. My concern is, is what other courses of action were identified or war-gamed so that folks could get their money back before the year was out? I remember specifically when my son was in high school, I asked him ahead of time, "How much money you got left?", and I said, "Make sure you get it all back." I know we have younger children, and someone should be advocating for them, saying, "You got three cents here." got three cents here. We're going to give it back to you. Clearly, you're not going to buy a lunch on the last day of school for three cents." I just, I don't, that's my comment. My question is, if the average check is 90-plus cents, what's the cost to the division to send them that money back in terms of the checks?
When you look at all of the players that are involved, it's almost $250 to process a check for less than $1. So it's not cost-effective.
Is $250 a person or?
A person, correct. When you look at all the individuals that are involved, not only is the finance department, you have the accounts payable, you have the manager, you also have me who review the bills, it goes to the county treasurer's office as well, then it has to go through the bank account. So when you look at everyone who touched that check, it's about $250.
And then the last point that I want to bring up is, we say we're going to give a, we're going to make it a contribution, a charitable contribution, if you will. If that were the case, are we going to provide receipts stating that they have a cash charitable contribution to, you know, for their tax purposes?
We can provide that if that's something someone wants. Absolutely, we could.
And wouldn't that be just as expensive as providing the check?
But when you look at what is coming to you this evening, this is not only a request coming from staff, it is also coming from parents. Parents are basically saying they are annoyed when we take taxpayer dollars and we send them a payment for 50 cents. So this is not only coming from staff, it's coming from parents as well.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, and my original comment was, what course of action have we considered to eliminate or alleviate that particular problem other than the, what I call the draconian step of just saying, "We're going to keep it"?
Right. Prior to coming into the meeting today, there were several refunds that I did approve. Refund requests come in throughout the week. So whenever a parent wants a refund, all they have to do is to submit that request to the food service department. So those happen almost every day. What you're looking at here today, we're saying you have a particular account that has not been touched for one whole year. Also, what we do, you can sign up for school bucks. Whenever your account runs low, they'll send you an email. So prior to us saying that we will not return the funds, we are going to do additional communications, the transfer exit interviews, graduation packets, letters coming from school bucks. It is our intent to return the funds to the parents. We don't want the funds. But if you're looking at a check for 10 cents, it's not cost-effective. But if a parent comes after a year and they say, "Ms. Gaines, return my 10 cents," I will do just that.
Then if that's the case, then why do we have the policy limiting it to a year?
We have a policy limiting it to a year because if you do not limit it to one year, we are required by law to automatically send all refunds, even if it's for one cent. So that's why we're bringing it to you this evening.
Ms. Grant?
As Ms. Gaines pointed out, this is anybody that requests their money back, and they're notified with all these means for the whole year. They're going to have their letters in their backpacks, publicizing on the meal account website and the division website, an auto dial, parent email notification, graduation packets, transfer exit packets, and letters from the school buck system. This would happen for an entire year. So if they request their refund, they have no problem mailing it. They're just saying they don't want to automatically mail after a year. So this is what, by them not communicating, they're requesting their refund is saying, "Okay, you don't need to mail me that check." And it's just the most cost-efficient way to deal with the problem.
I understand philosophically what Mr. Braswell and have said, and what Ms. Blaylock has said, believe me, I do. But I keep thinking Ernest Hemingway wrote 50 years ago, "Some things are worth fighting for. This one is not worth fighting for." It's not worth, I value your time. I value the professional time of the people who work for you. And I honestly, I don't want to see you take your valuable professional time worrying about a family that had less, you know, the 2,397 families that have less than a dollar. A dollar is not what it used to be anymore. So I'm not, I'm not going to stand here and try to, just on theory, on philosophy, ask you to spend your valuable time trying to refund less than a dollar to a family. It ain't worth my time, it shouldn't be wasted your time, and I ask this board to, by all means, let's approve this. Thank you.
Dr. Meyer?
I think, as I've listened to the discussion, if we're looking at a delay greater than a year, however long that is, then the whole process of communication with that parent continues.
Correct.
So it doesn't stop. You know, if we were to say two years or five years, then for five years, we would be communicating, trying to get a response from the parent.
But by law, after one year, you are required to automatically process the refund. So therefore, a five-year period that does not assist, we would have to keep it open indefinitely.
Okay, thank you.
And we're flexible. If you want to continue with the current process, we can keep that in place.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Mr. Laura, absolutely. It's costing us more money than it's worth talking about. I think we should vote.
Okay, Ms. Blaylock has a follow-up.
With all due respect to Mr. Blaine and Mr. Laura, I've sat on this committee for many, many years, and some things that y'all aren't aware of is the reason this came up years ago, there's history here. That's why I have a little passion about this. This isn't a tonight thing, is we were finding that children were going in, and let's use an example, they had a $20 bill, and they were buying breakfast. They were keeping it because they couldn't make change. And so I got to looking into some things that I thought were extremely unfair being done to students and parents. And one of the things that came out of that investigation that I did was when a child transferred or was a senior, the money that was left over, and I know this firsthand, was, wasn't given back. And people weren't realizing their money wasn't given back. So it's going to be, I still am going to stand by, I can't support it because it's not our money. It really isn't. And I understand that, nobody understands the frustration of a 93-cent check. I would suggest we do it a different way. I understand the paperwork process has to go through, but I don't understand why the senior in high school can't go up on the last day of school and get a refund.
They can. They can.
They can do it that way.
They can, absolutely.
Well, so, yeah, so-
And we're just saying if it's left on the account-
They can get cash money too. So we're acting like we're giving checks to everybody, but we're not. They are going up and getting their cash as well.
We only give a check if-
If they didn't claim it, right.
-after one year it has not been claimed.
Right, right. And I support continuing to do that.
Mr. Braswell?
I have a comment, and it's a response to what my fellow board members have presented in their arguments, and my point of concern has nothing to do with philosophy. It has to do with finding a course of action or weighing a course of action other than this one, that when a person is getting ready to leave school, because it's computerized, they can see what the student has left on their account, of force-feeding that to the student on that particular day. For example, if my son had a balance of $5.85, and it's clearly the last day of school, he's not going to use the $5.85 during the summertime. Why not give him the money then? You see that we have $5.85, that's to his account. My son currently goes to college, and whenever there is an overage in his account, that is sent out immediately. So we have the means to see that a student has a positive balance. So why aren't we demanding from the folks at food service to be proactive and force the money on the child, as opposed to being reactive, and then having to deal with course of action that costs us a lot of money in terms of producing checks?
In looking at the documentation that's before you, Mr. Braswell, we are providing you with eight different communication tools that we will be using throughout the year in addition to when a student transfers or graduate. We talked about the auto dial, they will receive that. We talked about how information for elementary students will be put into their backpacks. The school buck system will automatically generate a letter. We talked about when students graduate, they get a graduation packet. That documentation will be in their folder to let them know what their balance is. So we're already being proactive. Truly understand, it is not our intent to keep the funds from our families. So at least eight different communication tools have been documented. So I feel very optimistic that the numbers that you see here today, they will be drastically different come a year from now, because we're being very intentional in our communication.
Ms. Grant?
If it was that situation on the last day of school, they'd have a whole year before it would become forfeited to the fund. A year's worth of communication saying, "There's still a positive balance in this account. There's been no action on this account. Do you want your money?" It's just when they don't respond that it'll be put into this account. They have a whole year of communications from eight different sources before the money gets taken. It's not like we're taking money.
I understand fully what you're saying.
Okay. I was just, from your example, that didn't sound-
No, my example was, if you have, my example was, if you are a graduating student, whether you're graduating from fifth grade to sixth grade or whatever, it's your last day of school, and as you come through the lunch line, I see that you have a positive balance. Why not close the balance at that point? That's my point. And it would alleviate a heck of a lot of paperwork and follow-up from our behalf if at the lowest level of operation, that that money was forced on the child at that point. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
And I would address that from two angles. When you look at the elementary parents, a lot of times, they do not want their children to have funds. Is that something we can pursue from a high school level? Absolutely, we can look into it. So we can look into that as well.
And I do want to mention, when this came to the Food Task Force last week, it started off as $5, anything less than $5, and the same communication tools were going to, would come through, but the Food Task Force moved it to 10. So when it did initially come, it would have been under $5, would have been donated to the food services money. But with all of these communications, because something I had pointed out was to our students, "How much of this money are graduates?" And they found out that we, the data was, many of these students are graduates. So that was when I said, "Well, are they made aware of it? It needs to be in informational packets when they do graduate or when they're getting ready to graduate, that they have money so that they can get that money before they graduate, so this would not become a concern." Because I agree, I don't want to have to, I don't want to keep anybody's money. But with the way that the law says, is we have to send them a check, and with the cost of writing the checks. And we've sent checks, I mean, you can see, two, almost 2,400 checks were sent out for between a penny and a dollar. So, for $781. So that's the part that was kind of, I think that's, those big numbers are what got the Food Task Force. But I'm going to call for the question if there's any other comments. Okay, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the proposed revisions to regulation EBR, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, we have a five to, five to, the two nays are Mr. Braswell and Mrs. Blaylock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item, two-point, action item 8.02, Medicare retiree services. Ms. Colbert and Ms. Penny, thank you.
Madam Chair, to the members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, good evening. The school division issued a request for proposal for Medicare retiree TPA services. The procurement was advertised on E-Virginia, Virginia statewide electronic procurement website, published in the Freelance Star, and posted on Spotsboro County Public Schools' purchasing website. The evaluation committee, which consisted of three individuals, individually reviewed and scored each proposal submitted. Once the scoring was complete, the scores were sent back to purchasing, where the scores were then compiled, and the top-scoring proposal was identified. Negotiations were then conducted with the top-scoring offer. Health Smart was selected as the most qualified offer based on the evaluation factors stated below. Those factors include reduced internal administration, the ability to provide requested services, experience with similar projects, and proposed cost. The RFP evaluation committee is recommending contract award to Health Smart for a period of one year with four-year annual renewal options. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the Medicare retiree services?
I will recommend the, approve, I will move to approve the recommended action, sorry.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Blaine, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Blaylock?
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain because I'm a beneficiary as a retiree of the system, and I don't want to interpret it for perception of conflict of interest, so I will abstain.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Meyer. Any questions or comments? I do have a question. How many people or how many companies put in proposals?
We had two.
We had two. Okay. All right, that was my only question. Anything else? All right, well, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain.
And so we have, any opposed? 6-0 with one, Dr. Meyer, as an abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8.03, approval of the revision of the school board meeting calendar. Ms. Gaines?
Good evening again. The school board, we wanted to make you aware that the school board audit is almost complete. There was a slight delay with VRS not getting us the Gatsby 65 information. Instead of the meeting being held on Tuesday, November 24th at 6:00 p.m., it will now be held on December the 8th at 4:30 p.m. And because this is a joint meeting between both boards, your approval is required so that we can publicize. So we ask that you make that approval. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the changes to the meeting calendar?
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell.
I apologize, because you're on a roll, and we're about to. I'm noting, and I apologize for this oversight, on the current revised calendar that you're about to approve, we know that the legislative reception that had been scheduled, that was postponed, has been rescheduled for December the 1st.
At 6:30.
At 6:30. So what I would like to make sure of is that when this is approved, because that was a part of it, if you could include as an amendment, that date being changed, and we would give you a new clean copy that has the December 1st legislative reception on there.
I will move to amend as requested.
Okay, Mr. Blaine is amending the calendar to add in the December 1st date for our legislative meeting or legislative reception and taking out the October 22nd meeting, and a second by Mrs. Blaylock. So we are now motion, moving on, making our votes. Any more discussion? Okay, we will be voting on the amended motion with the change. May I, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those opposed? Seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 10.01, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Braswell.
Last, at the last meeting, I asked a question in regards to sixth-grade athletics, and I wanted to find out from staff when we would hear a report in regards to sixth-grade athletics. That's first.
You want me to go ahead, or do you want to...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I know that when we go to, we have two sessions in November. One is the first meeting of the month, and then we have a budget work session. We plan to bring that one up in one of those two sessions. And then, since it's, we also talked about the attendance data, and the attendance policy, and the data from that, that Ms. Shelley had asked at a previous, so I'm just going to hit that, too. That would be brought up at the December meeting.
Okay. And the other question that I had, the after-action report from Mosley, when should we expect that? When will we be able to glean some data from their report, so that we can digest that?
Very good question, thank you for following up on that. The, Mosley is completing their final space studies over the course of this week, and we expect to have a debrief with them either towards the end of this week, that I think originally had been scheduled, but also into next week. The goal would be that by the time we come to the November 16th work session, that we have at least some foundational data to present, and also, that would include enrollment projections and those sorts of things. We may have them included in that, because that will have some bearing on the draft of the five-year capital improvement plan. So that's the timeline to probably present some, but there could be still some additional findings beyond that.
Ms. Grant.
I request that we get that information before the work session, so we have time to read it and digest it, and have things available for the presentation, instead of that being the first time we see it.
They would probably present, I think, as we had discussed, they would probably present an overall or an overview on the ninth. But then, how that would be used to inform the CIP would come on the 16th, but maybe I wasn't clear. But the ninth would probably be when they would present an overall, before the budget work session. And then at the budget work session, we would...
Doesn't, the goal is to where we have time to read it, whatever the report is, read even a summary or a synopsis before it's presented publicly, when we don't have time to actually absorb the information. Like, I want to be able to study the information in front of me, before it's presented.
Then, as I've often said at this dais, the answer to that would be yes. We'll provide that.
Thank you. Mr. Laura, did you have something?
Yes, there are new business managers here.
Is there any more old business? Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Laura.
Okay. This is a personal request, which I hesitate to ask, but I will. In November and December, we schedule our annual school visit, and I don't want to impose too much hardship on anyone, but I would like to request that the superintendent to look into the possibility of swapping day three with day two or day one. If it's, if it can be done without much of a problem, I would appreciate that. If not, that's okay, we'll just roll with what we have. But I'd like to just make that request for you to at least take a look at it, and I don't anticipate an answer now. You can let me know via email or what have you.
What I'll do is, we'll examine those, how that would work, and I'll also try to see if we can achieve consensus from the board, which we did for these original ones, to see if that would work, and then certainly get back to you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any more new business? Okay, same...
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Forgive me for interrupting, I think we inadvertently moved past information items?
Oh, we did. Thank you. Were there any informational items, usual and customary?
They are usual and customary, but in regards to public comments, I would also reinforce something that was shared. If there is something that is actively being investigated, it would not be yet noted or submitted as a finalized part of the discipline report. So I did want to provide that clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Okay, moving on to 11.01, moving into closed meeting. Be it resolved on October 26, 2015, that the school board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia; and consultation with legal counsel on a matter involving actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body as permitted by Section 2.23711A7 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Blaylock, and a second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We are in closed session.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer. A second. Second by Ms. Grant. All those in favor of opening to, returning to open session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven-zero. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. May I have a motion, please, for certification? Mr. Laura, and a second by Mr. Blaine, and a roll call vote, please, starting with Ms. Grant.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura, aye.
Seven-zero. Dr. Meyer, could you please read the items from the closed meeting?
Motion that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, resignations, and retirement as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you. Sorry, that's a Dr. Martin. May I have a motion, please? Dr. Meyer, and a second? Second by Ms. Blaylock. All those in favor of the items from the closed meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven-zero. Motion by Mr. Laura to close, a second by Ms. Grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven-zero. We are, meeting adjourned. Eight forty.